It's seven o'clock. Let's call to order November tenth, twenty twenty five Town Council Meeting. Please stand for the pledge. With our Scout Master lead us, please.
This is the flag of the United States of America and to the great public which stands on the nation under God in the middle of the world with every being of justice for all.
Thank you.
In Europe.
What?
Europe. You get the first proclamation, please.
Need help with anything?
No, I don't think so. I may need a lift.
And Amy, if you want to invite him up too.
Yep. Definitely.
Okay, this is a proclamation. Whereas the Scouts BSA helped train the youth of our community with skills which we which will serve them well in the future. And whereas many of our youth participate in activities of the Scouts BSA which benefit our community. And whereas one of the crowning achievements of scouting is the attainment of the rank of Eagle Scout. And whereas Devion Bordloy from Troop One Seventy Scouts BSA completed the requirements for Eagle Scouts. And whereas Devion Bordloy used his Eagle Scout project to build a gala ball game pit at East Farms Elementary School. The game pit was built with safety and accessibility in mind, which include rubber flooring and wall bumpers to minimize the risk of injury. And an ADA accessible door was installed as well. And whereas Devion Bordloy's project involved the careful planning and design of the gag ball game pit. With special attention given to safety, accessibility and durability, every aspect of the layout was thoughtfully considered to ensure that the space would accommodate children of various ages and abilities while maintaining a fun and inclusive environment. And whereas having lived in Farmington most of his life, Devion is currently a junior at Avon High School. He was the lead programmer on the robotics team which earned the team first place honors in local and statewide competitions. And the team was ranked eighteenth at the world competition. He earned a black belt in Taekwondo. He participated in Junior Achievement Stock Market Challenge. He plays the guitar, piano, violin, showcasing a wide range of musical talent. And he is currently earning eight languages demonstrating exceptional dedication, curiosity, and cultural awareness. And whereas as a real as a result of Devion Bordloy's outstanding efforts on behalf of the children of our community, the game pit will provide the children with a fun, engaging, and long-lasting recreational space that encourages both physical activity and social interaction. Now therefore be it resolved that on behalf of the Farmington Town Council, we hereby extend Devion Bordloy our best wishes and we hereby proclaim November tenth, twenty twenty five as Devion Bordloy Day in Farmington, Connecticut. Dated at Farmington, Connecticut, this tenth day of November, twenty twenty five, Joe Capitofaro Chair for Farmington Town Council.
If you stay right there, Representative D'Amico has a proclamation for you also.
Mr. Chair, I just have to say, for those of us who can barely speak one language, eight languages is pretty impressive. So I give you a lot of credit, Devian. Nice, nice. So I have a citation from the State of Connecticut General Assembly, official citation introduced by Representative Mike D'Amico, Representative Rebecca Martinez, Senator Derek Slapp, and Senator Rick Lopes. Be it hereby known to all that the Connecticut General Assembly offers its sincerest congratulations to Devion Bordloy in recognition of your elevation to the rank of Eagle Scout, the highest achievement in scouting. You can be proud of the good work that you've done for your community, which will benefit from your dedication and perseverance. The personal qualities that have enabled you to reach this goal will serve you well in your future endeavors. The entire membership extends its very best wishes on this memorable occasion and expresses the hope for continued success. And it's given on the tenth of November, twenty twenty five, at the state Capitol in Hartford. And it's signed by the President of the State Senate, Martin Looney, Speaker of the House of Representatives, Matthew Ritter, and Secretary of the State, Stephanie Thomas. So congratulations and good work, Devian.
Andrew. Good evening, everybody. Hope everyone's well and thank you for coming out. This is an honor for me to do this. I'm a classmate of Andrew's father, Dave, from Farmington High School. So it's nice to have that connection and to see the next generation coming up through town and doing their service for our community. I know this is not the first time for you and I'm sure it's not going to be the last time up here being honored. So it's a great, great pleasure to know that you're working so hard along with all your other friends and classmates and the camaraderie that you guys bring together. So well done. Whereas the Scouts BSA helps train the youth of our community with the skills which serve them in the future. And whereas many of our youth participate in activities of the Scouts BSA which benefit our community. Whereas one of the crowning achievements of scouting is the attendant the attainment of the rank of Eagle Scout. Whereas Andrew Tabal from Troop One Seventy Scouts BSA completed the requirements of Eagle Scout. And whereas Andrew further enhanced the Lieutenant Vincent Core WW2 Plane Crash Memorial, which was originally completed by his father for his Eagle Scout project back in nineteen eighty seven. Whereas while flying a P forty-seven Thunderbolt aircraft, Lieutenant Vincent Hugh Core lost his life during a nineteen forty-five training mission. The WW2 crash site is located in the Farmington Town Memorial Forest in Farmington, Connecticut. And whereas Andrew's Eagle Scout project was further to enhance the WW2 memorial site by constructing a professional informational kiosk detailing the events of the crash while revitalizing the existing memorial and constructing a half mile of the trail leading to the site utilizing over thirty volunteers who collectively contributed over three hundred and sixty hours of work. Whereas Andrew attends Farmington High School as a dedicated trumpet player like his dad, performing for the Farmington High School Jazz Band, Wind Ensemble, the Valley Community Baptist Church Orchestra, and Taps Across America. He serves as lifeguard and swim instructor for the YMCA Chase and has also volunteered and fundraised for many worthy causes. Whereas a result of Andrew Tabal's Lieutenant Vincent Core WW2 Plane Crash Memorial project, the lives of the residents of Farmington will be packed in a meaningful way for years to come. Now therefore be resolved that on behalf of the Farmington Town Council, we hereby extend Andrew our best wishes and hereby proclaim November twelfth as Andrew Tabal Day in Farmington, Connecticut. Dated on the tenth of November, twenty twenty five, by myself, Joe Capitofaro Chair. Come on, Dad, come up and take a picture? Come on. And then we'll get. No, how'd you guys take a picture with your son? And you have Representative D'Amico coming up too for you guys.
So, Mr. Chair, it's particularly gratifying for me to give this citation to the third member of the Tabal family to get a legislative citation. Dad, and then your older brother, and now you, Andrew. So congratulations to you and the whole family. So, State of Connecticut General Assembly official citation introduced by Representative D'Amico, Representative Martinez, Senator Slapp, Senator Lopes. Be it hereby known to all, the Connecticut General Assembly hereby offers its sincerest congratulations to Andrew Tabal in recognition of your elevation to the rank of Eagle Scout, the highest achievement in scouting. You can be proud of the good work that you have done for your community, which will benefit from your dedication and your perseverance. The personal qualities that have enabled you to reach this goal will serve you well in your future endeavors. The entire membership extends its very best wishes on this memorable occasion and expresses the hope for continued success. Given on the tenth of November, twenty twenty five, at the state Capitol in Hartford. And it's signed by Martin Looney, President Pro Tem of the State Senate, Matthew Ritter, Speaker of the House of Representatives, and Stephanie Thomas, Secretary of the State. Congratulations, Andrew, and nicely done.
We got one more. Thank you. It's no problem.
This is our proclamation for Veterans Day. Whereas citizens of our country are justly proud of the men and women who have fought to defend the principles of liberty and freedom on which our nation was founded. And whereas from the revolutionary era militias through today's sophisticated defense structure, American service members have defended our country in times of challenge, brought honor to the United States, and created a solid foundation for its continued security, growth, and prosperity. And whereas despite the tremendous perils and pressures of wartime, our armed forces have defended the country with conviction and courage. In admiration of the strength of our convictions, other nations have looked to America for leadership, and our allies have always been secure in the knowledge that our proud country will not allow its principles and beliefs to be compromised. And whereas the citizens of the United States will forever owe an immense debt of gratitude to our veterans for the sacrifices they have made to secure the safety of our country. And whereas as an expression of that gratitude, President Dwight D. Eisenhower signed into law an act calling for the observance, observance Veterans Day on November eleventh each year. And in nineteen twenty-one, that date was originally designated as Armistice Day in remembrance of the end of World War One. And as a perpetual reminder of the blessings of peace. And by nineteen fifty-four, the observance widened to honor courageous veterans from all foreign conflicts. And whereas our veterans reflect the preeminent qualities of patriotism, patriotism, and courage in all of us, and continue to make countless contributions to military and civilian life. In addition, many men and women from Connecticut are in the National Guard serving our country along with many other Connecticut residents serving with the United States Army, Air Force, Navy, Marines, Coast Guard, and Space Force. Now therefore be resolved that the Farmington Town Council hereby thanks the many contributions and accomplishments of all of our veterans dated at Farmington, dated at Farmington, Connecticut, this the tenth day of November, twenty twenty five, signed Joe Capitofaro Chair.
Thank you very much. Now, if you would like to exit, you're more than welcome to. Thank you very much for all your support, guys. Well done. Take care. Congratulations. You're very welcome. We'll give it one second and then we'll. Okay. We'll move on to E, new items, which we have done. We'll go to F, public comment. If anybody's inside the council like to make public comment, please walk up to the podium, state your name and address, and you have five minutes.
Tim Kelly, sixty-two West View. With the elections now behind us, it may be tempting for the council to put itself on a glide path to the holidays, but I think this council has a little more work to do related to current fiscal issues. I want to remind the council of an important discussion we had in the March budget meeting with our school department. And I would encourage each of you to go back and watch the first five minutes of the videotape of your March twelfth council budget meeting. As you know, the biggest obvious driver of a school budget is the actual number of students enrolled in a given year. This dictates the number of teachers, resources required, French fry forecasts, and everything else. In the March budget meetings, we were given an enrollment projection for this current year from a new consultant who gave Farmington schools an outlook of forty-one hundred students. This enrollment projection was well above that of our usual consultant and our in-house analysis, referred to as the push-up report. Notably, it was called out in the March budget meeting that the new consultant, MP, had done enrollment projection for a neighboring school district the year before and had greatly overestimated their actual enrollment number. Still, our school leadership team insisted that forty-one hundred students was the funding required, and we gave it to them. But when the actual Farmington schools enrollment numbers came in, our enrollment was only four thousand students. So that's a hundred students less than the projection offered at the decision time. And a big miss for a town such as Farmington. Since we fund education at over twenty thousand per student, then a hundred students times twenty K is two million dollars of overfunding. For instance, we need three less kindergarten classes this September. That's three less teachers up front along with parents, classrooms, computers, crayons, et cetera, which is about half a million dollars right there. This council needs to claw back up to two million dollars from the school budget and return it to the town general fund. Or at least claw back one million if you're concerned about pulling funds mid-year. Look, it's not just about the money, it's about keeping integrity in the fiscal process. Now, school leadership may try to position this budget padding as some kind of innocent anomaly. But remember, this plan was presented, endorsed by a fifteen-year veteran superintendent and a Board of Ed chair with twenty years' experience. We probably should have seen this coming, folks. At this point, I might expect responses such as, well, we need the extra funding anyway for handling increasing special needs. We already issued a big increase to special services funds in the March budget cycle. Also, we had over three hundred thousand of special needs funding that was not used last year and rolled into this current school year budget. The other rationale that may be offered is that Farmington Schools is now afraid that some federal funding may disappear. Not likely, or worst case, partial. Regardless, we receive very little federal academic funding, about one percent of what Farmington Schools spends. So at a minimum, you need to have responsible folks come in here for a mid-cycle budget review and detail where the excess budget money is being spent or held. I would recommend that you reset and recover budget funding for this current fiscal year so it can be allocated to other town priorities. I'm sure it's not lost on this council that one million dollars buys two miles of asphalt or that a state-of-the-art fire truck costs over a million dollars. Or that our town pension fund, which covers a bunch of school employees, is significantly underfunded at this time. Or that we have over fourteen hundred SNAP recipients in Farmington, many of whom may be children. So I appreciate your prompt attention to this matter. Thank you.
Thank you, Tim. Anybody else inside like to give public comment? Then we'll go to online. Anybody online, Cap?
I do not see any hands raised.
All right, we'll give it one second. Nothing?
Nothing.
Okay. We will close out public comment. Go to G one, please.
Make a motion to accept the minutes of the October fourteenth, twenty twenty five regular Town Council meeting.
Second.
Motion second, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Make a motion to accept the minutes of the October twenty-eighth, twenty twenty five regular Town Council meeting.
Second.
Motion second. Any corrections on this? I don't see anything. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion passes. H, communication written in appeals. We don't have any, so we'll move over to the Board of Committees. The nineteen twenty building committee, everything is going great up there from top to bottom, from the roof, as I said last time, from the dome to their painting, finishing up work down to the bottom floor. The bricks should be hopefully in in a couple of weeks, we'll start laying out that. Kathy will be reaching out to you guys. We're going to try to set up tours for people before the end of the year so you guys can get in there and check out all the progress that's being made. And we'll move over to ad hoc fire station committee.
Yes, we had our last meeting was on October twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-five, and we met with Snardi of SPNA Architects. We needed some more time, more of his time to look over the drawings that or the plans that we had. We added a few more new considerations and we're waiting to hear back from him for our next meeting.
Yeah, I think we're at a critical point. We're at the final part of making our recommendation for the charge. And I think, I think Amy's spot on where we just needed a little more information regarding some things that tungstus hose and things like that that Chris is helping us with. And as soon as he reports back to us and is ready to meet, we're going to meet and I think we'll be at a good spot to make a good recommendation.
Thank you. Sidewalk Committee.
We have no new news since our last report, but Brian and I are actually going to get together at the end of this meeting and with our next meeting on the calendar. So we'll have something for you proudly next week.
Thank you. And High School Building Committee.
I have nothing new since the last report. Our next meeting is the nineteenth, five P M.
All right. Thank you. Move over to J, reported Chair of Council and Committees. For my chair report, obviously the election is done. Forty-one percent of the people came out to vote. So if someone's upset, if you didn't vote, then you can't be upset. Congratulations to all the winners. Well done. Today is the two-hundred-and-fiftyth birthday of the Marine Corps. I want to say thank you to all the Marines out there for your service, past and present, especially to my fallen ally, Lenny Ronaldini, for his service of the Marine in the Vietnam Conflict. Tomorrow is Veterans Day. There'll be a ceremony outside here at Town Hall at eleven A M. Hope to see all of our veterans there. And again, a special thank you to all our veterans, past and present, for your service to our country. We'll move over to Board of Education, please.
The Board of Ed has had two meetings since we last met, October twenty-first, and a special meeting on October twenty-seventh. They have reported on the student assessments, and Farmington continues to do well as compared to the benchmarks that it is aiming to meet. There's continued growth. Special education does continue to be a driver for budget costs. They did make note at the last meeting that they did not have to hire three kindergarten teachers due to the enrollment. And my understanding is that they'll be looking at not using the consultant next year, but don't quote me on that because that was my recollection. And at the special meeting on October twenty-seventh, they announced the new superintendent, Jess Janini, who was an assistant superintendent at Avon and is now coming to join us. Everything I've heard about him is great, and he will, his first day will be January fifth of twenty twenty-six. And it, it's my understanding that as he's available, he'll also be in our school system, shadowing Kathy and getting used to the, getting used to Farmington even before his effective date. The Board of Ed's next meeting is next week, November seventeenth, at the high school.
Thank you. And we'll stay with you for Conservation and Wetlands.
Conservation and Wetlands, last met November fifth. As I reported last time, it's a lot of routine applications and approvals for additions on homes, driveways, parking lots, things like that. There are, there was a report regarding updates to the tungstus country club. They've been working on some stormwater management and other work to take care of some overhanging trees, some drainage swales that were clogged and general upkeep of the facility. And at the last meeting, they also conducted their election of officers. There have been no changes. The chair will be Ned Statchen, Vice Chair Robert Eisner, and Secretary Dave Fox. Their next meeting is December third via Zoom.
EDC.
Yes, the last meeting that we had was on Wednesday, October fifteenth, and don't have much to report since then. But Wednesday this week is the EDC breakfast meeting. And our next meeting is the same day at five-thirty P M.
Thank you. And TPZ.
The last meeting of TPZ was Monday, October twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-five. I would say the agenda item that I think I'm going to focus on tonight is something that there was a public hearing that night, and I had already kind of identified that. But that public hearing has been now continued because the next TPZ meeting is going to be this Wednesday, November twelfth. In that Town and Planning Zoning Commission, the application for a text amendment to the regulations for zoning, Article One, Section Nine, definitions, Article Two, Section One, residential eighty, forty, thirty zones are permitted uses, Article Four, Section Eight, off-street parking standards, Section Eight A, parking of residential properties, commercial vehicle parking and associated text edits to Section Eight B and Section Thirteen. So that's kind of like the legalese aspect of it. I think people should, if they're, if they're interested in, in, in this text amendment about, you know, how parking is handled and kind of how it's kind of framed for, for residential zones, this would be a time to maybe look at the website, kind of look at all the information regarding this text amendment change, and then have your opportunity on Wednesday to come and express your view one way or the other.
Thank you. Well, we'll move over to K, reported the Town Manager.
You have the written report in front of you. As you mentioned, Joe, we have a Veterans Day ceremony tomorrow at eleven o'clock at the Town Hall. I am pleased to report that Moody's have reaffirmed the Town of Farmington's triple-A bond rating, the highest rating a municipality can achieve. Like to thank Joe and his staff for all the hard work on that. We also had our bond sale results, and you can see the memo from Joe that we had twenty-two million, five hundred thousand dollars a bond issue of twenty twenty-five, and we were pleased with the results there. So we did that. Dave, I put a little note in about the Tinty Barn for you. It's, I find understanding, I've been out there, they are moving along, so it looks good. And just a reminder that prior to the next Town Council meeting on December ninth, there'll be a reception honoring the outgoing members of the Farmington Town Council from six to seven P M. in the Town Ball Pavilion.
I did, I saw a crew out there on Saturday. Working on the weekend. Can I have a motion to accept the Town Manager's report?
Second.
Have a motion second. Any questions for Kathy before we move on? Well, thank you, Joe, for your hard work. Well, thank you, Joe, for your hard work. Great that we're saving even more money. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Appointments. We should have two.
L7, I make a motion that Barbara Sack be appointed to the Human Relations Commission for the balance of a two-year term beginning immediately and ending June 30th, 2026.
Second.
Have a motion second. Any discussion, questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
L12, I make a motion that Christine Pettit be appointed to fill a vacancy as an alternate to the Unionville Historic Commission for a three-year term beginning immediately and ending September 30th, 2028.
Second.
Motion second. Any questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Dave, do you have anything?
No.
You guys? All right. M, we have no old business, so go to N1, please.
N1, I make a motion to set the 2026 Town Council meeting schedule.
Second.
Motion second. Kathy?
Listed as the Town Council meeting schedule, in the note, I noticed it says the Town Council budget schedule, it just should be the Town Council meeting schedule, just so I see an error there. As you can see, that's our typical schedule. I did add our second meetings in the month. I also added a few extra meetings back onto the budget schedule, just in case we need them, so they are listed also. And then there's our annual town meeting, referendum, and then the budget workshops.
Any questions for Kathy?
Yes. Kathy, I noticed there's three meetings for January.
Oh, yeah. Thank you, Patty. I added an extra meeting for January because I think we're going to need one with the new town council, so I did put a second one in. The first meeting typically will be the introduction stuff, and then the next two meetings would, one be going over potentially the strategic plan, and then the last meeting starting to get into the budget and things like that. So we have usually on, when the new council starts, we usually have a third meeting. We don't usually put it on here. We usually do it at the first one. If you guys would prefer to do it that way, we could do it that way either, whatever you'd like.
My preference would be to do it as a special meeting just because, to keep it consistent with our rules of procedure and how we have it set up.
Okay, so then we just get rid of the 20th.
Okay.
Any other questions? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
N2, make a motion to approve the attached property tax refunds.
Second.
Motion second. Any questions?
You got anything this time, Joe? You good?
Still drawing a zero. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. We have no executive session. Well, I thank everybody for coming out. I see my scout class is here for more questions about government and stuff. We can answer them all for you later. We'll call for an adjournment, please.
Make a motion to adjourn the November 10th, 2025, Town Council meeting.
Second.
Motion second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Have a good night, everybody. Thank you.